We'll call the meeting to order if I have Mr. Cleveland in the air opening prayer.
We come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community for all the residents of the Northwest Territories.
Cleveland, next item under review is adoption of agenda. And there any additions to the agenda, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This we have Public Matters, a hearing regarding the NWT Arts Strategy, hearing from Ben Nind and Sarah Swan. Following that confidential correspondence. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Motion to adopt the agenda. Mr. Johnson, thank you. Having reviewed adoption of agenda, are there any declarations of conflict of interest? Hearing noncommittee continue. I'd like to extend a big welcome to those in the room with us today. This is a public meeting, but today we'll be unable to livestream this meeting as it's such a... It would be recorded and played back. My name's Jackie Jacobson. I'm the MLA from Annaput, and the Chair of the Standing Committee on Economic Development and Environment. We're joined here today by members of Standing Committee and Social Development. Today, together we, as a committee legislative assembly, we have identified to support the arts as an issue of joint concern. Today, we're holding a public hearing on the NWT Arts Strategy to see if supporting the needs of artists and arts organizations. I'd like to remind all the members and presenters to direct all questions and comments through myself as the Chair. And please wait to be recognized before speaking. That'd help us and work go a lot smoother. Now, I'll now ask members to introduce themselves, starting Mr. Cleveland.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Caitlin Cleveland, MLA Chemlike.
Kevin O'Reilly, Framelake.
Janeway Ellen Armstrong, MLA Pomofi.
Alan Johnson, MLA Yellowknife.
Thank you, committee members. Thank you. Welcome for those who are in attendance here today. If you have not already registered to speak, but would like to present to the committee, please let our staff know and we'll make... We'll put you on the list. We have two people here registered to present this to us this morning. We'll first hear from Ben Nind. Mr. Nind? Yeah, thank you. Following that, we'll hear from Sarah Swan. We will start the meeting with Mr. Nind, and please introduce yourself and proceed with your presentation. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Do I wait for the mic? Oh, it's on. Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the members of the committees for meeting on this important issue. My name is Ben Nind. I've been a resident of the Northwest Territories since 1966. Came up as a young man and grew up in the North and here in Yellowknife. Arts was very, very important for both my education, but also for my activities outside of school. And that has continued until now. I've considered myself an artist. I have been an administrator, and I also have been a board member of a number of organizations. And I currently sit in my second term as a board member of the Canada Council for the Arts, which is the National Artists Council. For reference sake, before delving into the particulars of this strategy, I want to present to you some background information in terms of putting the strategy as it sits now in context. The first, and there's a number of documents I'll make reference to. The first is the NWT Economic Opportunity Strategy, which I know you're all familiar with. There's no creative economy sector in the larger picture within this strategy. But under Objective 5B, there is a section on increasing opportunities for the arts. And there's some interesting linkages that have been made in that document for reference. I will note that 50% of the illustrations in this document are of a cultural or an artistic theme. And it's interesting that we draw upon the arts and the cultural scene here in the Northwest Territories to essentially promote this territory. But we give very, very little support to it. That's number one. The second document is the 2022-2023 Economic Review NWT, which you're all familiar with. Now, when I searched that document yesterday and I typed in arts, there was one hit, and it's parts. When searching culture, there are two hits, and both are agriculture. There's no mention at all within this economic review of the cultural sector. The third is the NWT Bureau of Statistics. The GDP for 2021 shows that there was a difference. 3.9 million was generated in 2020, but it fell to 3.2 million in 2021, a loss of 17.9%. Now, it's all lumped in arts, entertainment, recreation, right? There is no real sense of the impact, especially during COVID, of what happened to the arts and cultural sector within this territory. Digging deeper, though, there's a capture of language in traditional activities, hunting, trapping, berry picking in the NWT. But I could only find one year of data, persons who produced arts and crafts by community in 2013. And it showed that 23.3% of the population of the NWT produced arts and crafts in this territory. 23.3% of the population 15 and older were active in the creative sector. But for the most part, it goes unsupported. This is valuable data, but it was only caught one year. And my question is why? And I'll tell you why. Because it was the NWT Arts Council who asked Stats Canada to put one question on their survey at that time regarding participation in arts and culture. And that's why that data is there. It has not been followed through since. Number four, the fourth document, Arts Program Review, carried out by the Catalyst Research Group, published in October 2022. If you are familiar with that document, it essentially is in response to Goal Number One, which I'll talk about in the strategy. It essentially found that you have two departments delivering arts support, arts and cultural support, that are totally disorganized, they're overlapped, it's a mess. And it's a mess for a reason, and we'll go through that. The fifth is the Strong Culture and Strong Territory GNWT Culture and Heritage Strategic Framework 2015 to 2025. This document, whose purpose is to identify GNWT's culture and heritage vision, goals, and priorities until 2025, to enable the departments to better coordinate and align their existing work. Well, it's interesting that that isn't even mentioned in the strategy at all as a background document. So again, this document, the strategy itself, in terms of its references, is lacking. Now, to the NWT Arts Strategy, which is before, before all of us here. The current strategy should practically enhance the lives of artists and cultural workers and arts and cultural organizations in the NWT. And the key word is that it should. But there's some key challenges, and the reasons for this is that, for the most part, the strategy is three things: unfocused, unsupported, underfunded. Unfocused. Here are the reasons the strategy is unfocused, and it's the fact that it stems from access to baseline information. And that is why the strategy is what it is. You can't manage what you don't know. Under the Arts Program Review Section 1.1 Background, yes, there is a summary of the ecosystem of the NWT as this strategy sees it. But this strategy, I can guarantee you that with 100% certainty, they cannot put on your table a detailed breakdown of who, what, where, when, how, and why for this sector. And it's in stark contrast to any details collected for, say, something like the mining sector or construction, transportation, warehousing sector, who are all very much labeled in the economic sort of plan going forward for the territory. Not having a baseline therefore affects how you mark progress and how you adjust to make progressive change. Nowhere in this strategy is the establishment of a baseline mentioned. And it's troubling considering the documents that I've mentioned. It needs to be captured, just as it was captured in 2013. Captured door-to-door in each of the communities because a large percentage of this population is involved in this sector. So think about that baseline as I go through each one of these sections. Goal number one under the strategy is to improve GNWT Arts Programs and Services. It's interesting that the first goal of the strategy that's for this creative sector on the ground is for the department producing the strategy to look at ways on how it can fix itself to make the strategy work better. Goal number one is not a goal for this sector. It's a goal for two wandering government departments. And it has really no place in a strategy and should be removed. So when, under next steps in this document, it is stated that the key to success is action one, then one knows that this is not about the creative sector. It's about trying to fix the inefficiency of government departments who continue to be able to do their work in supporting the arts and cultural sector at the community level effectively. All of the recommendations in this document directed to the department should be focused instead, and this is what I put forward, on the creation of a fully facilitated NWT Arts Council, arms-length, to take a lead. But more on that later. Goal number two under the strategy is to strengthen the education engagement and leadership in the arts. Yes, this has solid intentions, education, engagement, leadership, but they're not mutually inclusive of each other. These three things alone could form a whole strategic plan. Education. Why don't we have an artist in the school program? We have 49 schools in an NWT. You employ 49 artists full-time on a rotational basis, and you link those with community artists. You've all of a sudden doubled the work that you have in the community just in one single action. Okay? I've spoken about the baseline requirement necessary for good management. Education of creative individuals, perfect example. How many master artists are here in the Northwest Territories? How many are emerging? How many are mid? How many have studios? How many are interested actually in taking young people or mentoring others? How many are working outside of this territory? None of that data is available at this time. And then there's the institutional question. Why do we not have a fully established creative learning institution here in the NWT? Why has Aurora College failed miserably at this? Why has the Polytech not even considered it when, right now, there's a massive and digital AI shift within the creative world internationally and here in Canada? Why is it the leadership does not understand that education and the arts are the basis of a healthy society? Why have they not committed to it? Why is this not in the strategic plan? Engagement. So under engagement, it says, "marketing campaigns and raising the profile of employment opportunities." All I can say is, a marketing plan does not make an artist. It might help the artist in their reach, but it doesn't make the artist. So it should be secondary, marketing. Employment opportunities? What is the base wage for the artists here in the Northwest Territories? Does anybody on this committee know? Where's the baseline data that is showing that? Because for the most part, if you are a parent, one of the last things that you say to your child is, "Become an artist." Lots of them will say, "Become the doctor, become the lawyer, et cetera, et cetera." But why do we take away that opportunity? It's because, for the most part, in this contemporary society, we look at the artist as being on the low rung of the ladder in terms of how much money he can make out of this. So to actually say a profile of employment opportunities is a little bit of a dig at the sector itself. Leadership in the arts. They mention it. Interesting, no mention in this strategy, though, of leadership initiatives. You know what they say? Buildings, renovations, and conferences. So leadership is not even addressed. The strategy misses the point. So I want to remind the committee that the greatest resource in the North is its people. The greatest renewable resource is an individual's imagination and their drive. If you supported the exploration of imagination as you do the exploration of diamonds and gold and lithium, then you really are supporting possibilities that have unlimited potential. Diamonds run out. Imagination is unlimited. The creative, i.e. the artist, has the power to create something out of absolutely nothing and something that can move you and something that has worth and value. Goal number three, as stated in the strategy, support arts infrastructure. Oh, it's easy to build infrastructure, but it's harder to run a sustainable program. And if you're going to build arts and cultural infrastructure, it's got to be backed by two things. Number one, it's got to be backed by community and an active supportive organization that has the funds and the means to be able to do that. Otherwise, after a number of years, it empties out and becomes a building that will be used for storage. The baseline is important here. If done properly, it'll guide you in where that infrastructure is needed. What communities have what? Which communities need the most cultural infrastructure? Which communities are working at it now? Has health and safety audit ever been done for cultural spaces? How many of our cultural workers are working in spaces that really work against their health? These are all questions. Increasing access to material starts at home. They identify it, but they need to target something that's tangible, baseline information. That will give you what the material management supply challenges are. What can be provided here in the NWT that is not sourced in the South? Simple question. How many moose hides are left in the bush by hunters? Why are they left there? Why are we importing tanned hides from the South? How are stone supplies for carving managed? Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Under Goal Four, strengthen the NWT creative sector. If you look at this in detail, everything then seems to be thrown underneath this. But in the ultimate end, linkages to the outside network and funders, lots of dollars from the outside. And I guarantee you, lots of dollars from the outside are lying on the table, unused and unaccessed by NWT artists. Canadian Heritage leaves millions of dollars on the table. Canada Council for the Arts has many, many programs that can be applied for. However, you have to be able to have the ability and the knowledge and the wherewithal to be able to actually make those applications. If you don't make those applications, you're not going to get the funding. Okay? So nowhere in this strategy is there a grant-writing team that goes community to community to community to work with arts organizations and artists to be able to strengthen arts grant writing. Take a look at the jurisdictions across this country that are accessing most of the arts funding. Those jurisdictions, at their base, is the ability to write really, really good grants because that opens the door for the money to be able to flow in and therefore for the activity to take place. Then they have the creation of an NWT Arts Association. Interesting that the government, which is totally unorganized and confused in its support, wants the NWT arts community to organize into a single unit instead of doing what is best for the sector and rolling departments into a one-stop shop where everyone can come and do business. I call this a great diversion of unfocused energy. They're asking the sector to solve the problem that they themselves are suffering from. unsupported. The creative sector, you can read this, is treated a little bit like a clown with two personalities. The happy one, that everybody pulls out when they want a celebration, and then the sad one that they stuff into the closet, that they give absolutely no support to, but they give hope. They feed it with a little spoon. But there's nothing that is really, really, really serious that is given to the arts and cultural sector, either the individual artist or the organizations and the festivals, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, that are out there, that are lacking the ability to be able to expand and move forward. Underfunded. There is no identified money for this strategy. I can't say anything about that at all. And that tells you how serious the strategy really is. Two departments, they're not serious. And leadership at the top here at this committee needs to be able to step up and make that happen. Of note, the NWT Arts Council is not even talked about here in this strategy. It's missing. And it's missed, and it's unfortunate because really, the NWT Arts Council is the only community-based, arms-length organization that has served the NWT arts and cultural sector across the NWT, except for the NWT Film Commission, which takes care of that creative stream. Why is the NWT Arts Council not central to the strategy? To me, it's very evident. The council's independent. It knows what's happening on the ground. It's made up of community members. It is, by the way, the only council in the whole of Canada where the members actually go through every single application. Most of them are peer-reviewed. All of them in the rest of Canada are peer-reviewed, except the NWT Arts Council. So not only are they from community, but they know every single grant application that is going through because they review them. And it's a hands-on arts council, okay? The fact that ECE has not bolstered the administration of council for past 20 years, Arts Council's been asking, "Bolster it, bolster the administration," right? Those support workers keep getting dragged away from the real good work that the council can do. So... And the fact that both departments have totally ignored the council as a one-stop-shop option and haven't even considered it, to me, shows that the departments are navel-gazing. They're not looking forward. They're not really worried about the sector. What they're worried about is their own internal workings. And for me, when a strategy reflects that, it's not about a strategy that is doing anything for the sector. It's about something that's trying to help out essentially to mismanaged departments in this area. I thank the committee for your time to hear this pretty blatant feedback. I hope that the strategy can, in some ways, some sense, maybe be pulled, maybe be reworked to serve the needs of the creative community in a real impossible manner. Otherwise, it remains too broad, too self-serving for the departments responsible, too weak to implement and measure progress, and really does a disservice to each one of us who dance, who laugh at stories, who have a painting on their wall, who are wearing some of the best embroidered clothing that we have here in the NWT. And I think we can do much better. Masichul.
Thank you, Mr. Nind. That was a really good presentation. Needed to hear that. Personal copy questions?
Thank you for the presentation, and it's interesting to see a different hat with you coming here in front of us today. So I do appreciate you taking the time. I sat here and, as you were talking, kind of just nodding along with everything that you're saying. I've had conversations with NWT Music, Trevor Sinclair, where a lot of the things that you've brought up here are the same issues and concerns that he has, namely not funding these regional group to do work when every other province and territory has funded positions for executive directors for their arts or their music programs and such. And I do believe we rely a lot on volunteers to get that all done. And we all know when the volunteer moves on, the organization starts to suffer because it's usually somebody's labor of love, and then they get burnt out. So I don't know that I have a lot of questions. I think you've really given us some areas where we can go back to the department and give you or give them your feedback. I just wanted to say, too, like, I do come from that more technical mining, engineering background. But one of the things that I really have realized in this role was during the pandemic when I started to buy all the earrings. And it was a way for me to connect with women and other beaters around the territory and then really realizing how much just that little bit can have an impact in the small communities. So when you're talking about, you know, look at 23% of people are artists in our communities, it's a totally untapped resource and world-class, and it's very undervalued as well when people are going out to sell. So I guess I don't really have a lot of a question. I completely agree with what you're saying and hope that we can get some meaningful support. And I also think that whenever the government is trying to do something, they're just, they're not the experts. They don't know what they want to do. And I agree with putting it back into the Arts Council hands. And, oh, maybe I will have a question. So the Arts Council, right now, as it stands, it is all volunteers, and is there any funding that comes from the government, from like a core perspective? Or is it all project-based funding? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Nanki, Mr. McWint.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. So the NWT Arts Council operates, supposedly operates and does operate as much as it can independently from the department, ECNE. ECNE operates as the secretariat to the council. Members are paid a per diem, so just like any other board, they're paid a per diem. And there's, all the administrative tasks lie within the secretariat itself, so operated by the department. So the monies that are given to council for distribution, right now, that runs through, it says NWT Arts Council, but it's interesting that on the website, it actually falls under the ECE granting system. So really, the lines have very recently been blurred between an independent arts council and the department actually managing the grants. It's the same color, it's the same, right? So if you take a look at it, the webpage for the NWT Arts Council is gone now. So if you take, take a look at it, the webpage for the NWT Arts Council is gone now. There's no, there's, there's, that independence is now, for the most part, blurred. And for me, the fear is that the Arts Council, well, as seen in the strategy, becomes a lesser entity when actually it should be very much strengthened because of the fact that if you take a look at the alumni of leadership that came from the communities, every single region came from the communities. For the last 30 years, 35 years, that still remains in community, has been totally untapped. And that rests with, with, with the past of Arts Council and the ability to also be able to move the NWT Arts Council on an equal footing with every other arts council across this country.
Thank you for that, Mr. Nin. Mr. Knockley.
Yeah, that's really concerning to hear. And it is becoming a conversation about a lot of the boards and such around the territory. I, yesterday I raised that the Arctic Energy Alliance is all, you know, government employees and appointees and, and power corp people. So, you know, that is disturbing to me. And again, I really come back to, this is a government that really likes to retain control. And I think that when I've looked at the way that the daycare rollout has been and the arts, they're not looked at as being, like, they're not looked at as industries. I think you, you touched on that fairly well in your, your presentation. And, and the government, I think, interferes in a way they wouldn't if we were looking at more, say, male-dominated industries like construction, mining, all those ones that you talked about. So yeah, I guess I can just make a commitment that I will be pushing for the Arts Council to become independent. And maybe we really look at, you know, how we can, as a committee, make that happen and pull it away from EC and give that control back on the grants. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knockley. More of a comment, but would you like to respond? Any, next on this, I have Mr. Cleveland.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And thank you very much, Mr. Nin, for your presentation. And when you were speaking about, you know, a parent's role in, in supporting the arts as well, that one definitely resonated with me. I had the privilege of growing up with a, a parent who you know, who was an artist. And one of the things that my mom always said to me, and I adore her for it today, was, "Do what you love and the money will come." And as, you know, as you are entering post-secondary, you don't always follow your parents' advice. And I did not. And then one day I realized that I needed to do what I loved. And my mom came to me and said, "Well, you finally figured it out." So I, I think that there is incredible power in how we as parents and community members support artists and, and in our roles here as well. So I think that that's a valuable lesson, one that I thank you for bringing here today. I think there is huge power in how we also respect and value creativity in the workplace. And I think that creativity allows us to take a step back and look at the way that we're doing things. And that bringing arts into everything you do, whether you are an engineer, an environmentalist, or a lawyer, allows you to do a better job at what you're actually doing. And so there's, there's, there's huge, huge benefits to arts beyond 2D paintings on a wall or 3D sculptures in a room. It's, it's huge. And, and you see that even with yourself, where you wear multiple hats. And anyway, so comments, Mr. Chair. But my question is, in regards to the independence of the Arts Council, I did look into a private members bill about creating that independence. But because these lines are so far blurred at this point, the government is providing funds to the Arts Council and paying those administration fees. And we as regular members cannot do private members bill that push on, they can't be money bills. They can't change the way the government is, is spending dollars. And so I'm wondering if you can speak to what would be the government's role in an independent arts council, in your view and with your experience? Because really what I see is, as some of the strengths of an independent arts council, is the ability to work different than government, the ability to use a lot more of that creativity, fluidity, being able to shift directions when need be. And one of the things that we saw even just recently in COVID is the, the federal government came out with millions and millions of dollars for art councils right across the country. And we missed out on those dollars because those dollars were exclusive to arts councils and not to governments. And our lines were so far blurred that the rest of Canada got those dollars and we did not. So I think that this is a really important conversation that needs to be had. And I think that is, is one of the key factors that stands between us being able to actually grow a, a self-sustaining industry. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Nin.
If I, if I go to your question directly, the, say, for example, Canada Council for the Arts. It sits as an independent entity, but it also sits within, within the framework of the federal government as a crown corporation. However, the appropriations as far as money is concerned is given by the Act of Parliament. And it is given to the council to be able to manage directly. So in other words, yes, they have a Canadian Heritage Department, okay? And that department is responsible for a certain suite of programs. But the, the mandate of the Canada Council for the Arts is separate from the department itself. And it sits essentially in support of, of the arts and cultural sector across the country. But the money is given directly. So it doesn't, doesn't roll through, roll through a department. It actually rolls through an appropriation from Parliament each year.
And I appreciate that. And I'll try and be a lot less long-winded on my next question. One of the things that the government will come back and, and often says is, "Look at all the wonderful things that we're doing for the arts." Like, and, and so, you know, whether it be through, through seed funding or through grants that they provide to artists on, on an annual basis, it often ends up being kind of sprinklings here and there and not kind of a powerful uplift of the entire industry. And so I'm wondering if you can speak a little bit about how some of these funding programs really could be reformed on, on a much quicker basis? Because changing regulations is much quicker than changing legislation. And so I'm wondering if you can speak a little bit to, to that at all? Thank you.
Mr. Knockley.
Thank you very much for the question. For me, I think you just have to look at, at essentially that report that came back. That was essentially an examination of how the, how the programs sit themselves currently. And right now, there's a lot of problem in terms of defined mandate, in terms of overlap, and in terms of confusion, both amongst the departments, but also confusion in the artistic sector. Why is it that I have to, if I'm, I just had a recent conversation about this. Why is it that someone who is writing a book and wants to go through the whole process of creating a new piece of literature here in the Northwest Territories has to apply to one department to be able to actually do the writing of it? And then has to turn around and figure out how are they going to actually cover publishing costs with a totally different department, which has got a whole bunch of different policies, regulations and, and places to be able to actually put that application? So, so all of a sudden, you're asking the artist or the creative individual to go to two different funding sources on two different, that have two different mandates, that have two, two totally different ways of operating. Doesn't make any sense. And that's why I say, take both departments, fold them into one arts council so that from inception right through to production and distribution, it's one string and one string over.
Thank you, Mr. Nin. Next on this, I have Mr. O'Reilly.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chair. Thanks for the presentation. So I've been here seven years. I've done my best to try to push a lot of the things that you've talked about, you know, trying to get more emphasis on the Arts Council, actually getting people appointed to it. So that, for a while, it wasn't even functioning because they let appointments lapse, didn't bother to try to fill them. It's been a real struggle. And, you know, although this government has stated that it's, one of its priorities is economic diversification, doesn't really do that very well. You know, even with the recovery strategy that our government developed, I had to work very hard to get arts actually inserted into that. I don't think it was taken very seriously. But anyways, there might be one little surprise coming, and that's all I can say. But it's probably not enough. It's too late. So I honestly think it's too late for this assembly to do anything. And what I want to suggest to you is that, you know, you work with colleagues across the NWT to, you know, make this issue an election issue. I mean, you know, and I, I think, you know, if, you know, much of your presentation would, would, could be put together very well, the lack of data, lack of focus, all of that kind of stuff. But where you can, so I think it would be important to at least create a picture for voters of some of the issues, educate them a bit, but also, you know, solicit views of candidates, get them on record through surveys and so on. And then do your best to try to influence the priorities for the next assembly and the mandate the cabinet has to develop from there. So I guess, you know, nothing's going to happen in this assembly quite frankly. Well, I shouldn't say, said, there might be one little surprise. But I, I think, I want to suggest that, you know, you focus on the future and, and getting this an election issue and making it a priority for the next government. So just some comments and suggestions there. And I might have, yeah, no, I think that's good. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. O'Reilly. Mr. Johnson. I'm sorry.
I'd be happy to hear. Thanks.
That is a lot of comments. But, okay, Mr. Nin. Well, you know, you know, it's, it's interest, it's interesting. I, I appreciate the reality check on it. I do appreciate it. However, what I find interesting is, once again, the artists have to advocate. So where's the leadership at the table? Where's the leadership that actually stands up and says, "Arts and culture are central to our identity and need to be supported"? Okay? This is an observation I can give you from, from where I sit and from my past experience. Which, and a question for you. Which jurisdiction in Canada is the most dynamic jurisdiction as far as arts and culture? It's a cultural thing. Can I tell you something? If you are a politician in Quebec and you touch one single dollar of cultural money in Quebec, you will never be re-elected. And the reason is, is because of the fact that it is at the heart and soul of who that jurisdiction is. And there are so many lines of similarity that are here in the Northwest Territories. How many official languages do we have here? We're the only jurisdiction with more than two. Think about that. Think about just that opportunity alone and build then upon the heart of what makes us so different, so unique, so absolutely incredible in terms of what we have to say to the rest of the world. And that has to be central to how, how decisions are made going forward. But it's not there. It's assumed. And this is what I keep saying. The more you assume it, the less you use it, and therefore it's going to whittle away. And when it whittles away and those artists leave and those artists don't look at it as, as a place for employment and a future in it, then this territory becomes less. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Firstly, thank you for the mentioning the artists in the school program. I've just been reading about Yukon. It's the first I've heard about that. That seems a very tangible ask. You know, employs 30 artists, they're allocated a certain number of hours to travel around schools. It appears to have a budget of just under a million dollars to, you know, it also has a coordinator and it seems to be doing in the education system. So I think committees should probably flag that and, you know, try and copy it. I, I guess, you know, there are some big conversations happening on the infrastructure side. I, I expect that money may, you know, maybe, maybe even less than this government even, Kevin. There could be some changes. And, and, you know, it's not just us. I, you know, the Klicho are building that cultural center in Metroco and they, they pulled tens of millions of dollars out of the federal government. And, and I know other Indigenous governments are doing that. So I, I think we are on a path where we're going to end up with more buildings. I strongly suspect we will end up in what you just said, where the finding the program in dollars is really hard. It's really hard for, to find them in the GNWD budget or get them out of the feds even. They, they like to build buildings. But I, my question, I guess, in that frame is, I, I think one of the solutions to that is perhaps framing it more as a, you know, an institution where there's some educational opportunities, where there's studio space, that there has to be a way to kind of do this so that the programming in the building matches long-term. I'm wondering if you could kind of give us some suggestions of where to look or examples of what are doing that? Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Nin.
Sure. I read a very interesting article, news article, yesterday. The president of Aurora College, who lives here in Yellowknife, you know, basically saying that nobody wants to go to Fort Smith. Fort Smith has got an incredible, incredible campus there. Could you imagine if you turned the whole campus there into a place where, number one, language, language development is there? Number two, drumming? You have a drumming institute there? Number three, you have a tanning institute there? You have a storytelling institute? You've got theater, you've got music, you've got AI, you've got film? You've got visual arts, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Let's, let's run the gamut. You want to, you want to turn a campus inside out, upside down? Want to, you want to make Fort Smith the most attractive campus in, in the whole territory? You put it there. I'll tell you something. The president of Aurora College will sure, sure be at Aurora College in Fort Smith real quick. Because of the fact that, take a look at where the, okay. Take a look at any major city in North America or around the world. Take a look at neighborhood renewal. When a neighborhood is down and out, who moves in there? The artist. Why? Because it's cheap. What does the artist do? He turns that neighborhood around and everybody wants to be there. And all of a sudden, the rents go up, the artist has to move out. But what have they established? Okay? So let's, let's extend that a little bit to why do, why do we have such a problem here in the Northwest Territories attracting professionals? Do you know what the first thing is the doctor asks? What cultural institutions have you got there? How good is your theater? How good is your gallery? How good are, what's, what's, what are the restaurants doing? Right? So take a look at it as an ecosystem. You strengthen the arts and cultural side. You strengthen the whole, you strengthen every single sector. Recruitment then does not become a question of why can't we get people here? Why aren't people staying here? You strengthen the cultural sector, it's going to, it, it, it will have ramifications right across the board. Does that start to help?
Thank you, Mr. Nin, Mr. Johnson. No, just before you go, Mr. Nin, like, you know, oh, sorry, Jane.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And I understand what you're saying. And I know that arts, there's all kinds of, you know, different arts. And for us, as an Indigenous, especially for us Klicho, you know, like, when our elder pass, all the language, the cultural, the traditional knowledge goes with the person. Everything that, who we are, you know, goes with them if we don't. That's why right now, Klicho, I know they're, they're promoting, you know, like arts and crafts. So we're trying to use, because our language is important. So we're trying to use, because our language is important to us and everything that our ancestors have done, the elders have it. So we're trying to gain that back by, everything is, we're doing everything in our, in our, in our regions. And I know a lot of, they're doing sewing, you know, I don't know where they get their money from, but you know, I know there's, they're promoting sewing and they're promoting drum making and they're doing, you know, working on the hides, all those things, trapping, everything, they're doing lots that, you know, just to maintain our culture and because everything, you know, we don't have too many elders anymore. You know, we just lost an elder in February that was, that's 94 years old. So a lot of stories went with them, you know, like storytelling. So those are all important. Those, that's why I said there's all kinds of, you know, arts out there. But I know that a lot of, part of healing because of the residential school, a lot of these things were, you know, like, I mean, it was prohibited for us to practice. So a lot of those people that I talked to, especially ladies, is that when they're sewing, it's part of healing for them, you know, especially with beadwork, you know? And it's part of healing. So a lot of them are using it that way. And I understand that now that, you know, I know we haven't been focused too much on the arts and crafts too, I think. And I dealt with Arts Council before and I can't remember, that was to produce a CD for the church. I don't know if they gave us any money or not, but I know Klichu government stepped in and paid for the CD for everything, the promotion, or, you know, that Klichu gospel songs. And I, because it didn't fit in with their criteria. So I think we were denied. So I know more attention needs to be, to, you know, given to the, to the people in the regions as well. And I even have some ladies talking to me saying the cow hides, because of the restriction on caribou, you know, like, so we can't get too many hides and, or caribou hides, so a lot of people are making things with commercial hides. And they're saying it's too expensive. They have to go somewhere to get it. And it is expensive even going to the local store here, you know, for small peas, like it's like close to a hundred dollar, you know, and it's, they can't afford it. So that's kind of, it's prohibiting some from, you know, doing anything with the arts. And so it's, I know more needs to be done in that area. I understand. And with the school, we do need more artists in there, yes, because a lot of artists, they went to a different school, you know, like we even have our young artist in Betchiko, he goes to the school. But how many schools does he goes to, you know, like, I mean, it'd be nice if we have more of them going to a different school because there's a lot of hidden talents in a lot of our youth. They're good at sketching and everything, but then it just sits right there with them. It's not going anywhere because nobody is encouraging them, like you said, you know, because it's, how can they make a living out of it? So I think that's what a lot of parents are worried about, is that what you're going to do with it? Like, can you afford, you know, like a roof over your head with that? Because you got to work many years to get better. And so, yeah, I think we need to do more in that area and to promote local artists in our regions, especially in, well, the whole, when I said our region, I mean, the Northwest Territories, where we're from too. So, and yeah, I think it's, it needs to be in the school too as well. I think that's where all the talents are. So it's just more of a comment, so I do understand, I do understand where you're coming from because I dealt with some of these people before and I think it needs more attention. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Redd. Sir. Do you want to reply to anything to that, Mr. Nind? Yes, thank you. Thank you for the comments and the observation. The other, one of the issues that I want to bring up in this goes to the heart of things as well, is the opportunity right now for Indigenous arts. Right across this territory, every single jurisdiction is looking at strategies for Indigenous arts. That opens up lots of money pots and opportunities then for Indigenous arts to be able to be, number one, supported at the community level and then flourish both at the community, regional, territorial, national, international level as well. Okay? As well, a lot of strategies are looking at cultural diversity, inclusivity, disability arts, and this very, very important linkage between social health, arts education, and arts as a healer. Department of Social Services does not have an arts healing, arts healing branch. There's no linkage there at all. And to me, that's absolutely crazy. It needs to be considered as being an instrument of healing. Okay? The other issues are income issues. In other words, how does it look in terms of if you are an elder and you're producing something and you are receiving social income payments and all of a sudden your payments and your support from that program is affected by anything that you make in terms of your handicraft or, or any sort of participation in the, in the making of something that can be sold? That needs to be addressed. Tax issues can also be addressed. Why is the NWT not a tax-free zone for artists? Could be very simply done. Right? Take that territorial tax, not that a lot of artists are going to be involved with that, but all of a sudden declare yourself a tax-free zone for artists. Ireland did it. And Ireland, all of a sudden, had a major influx of artists come into its jurisdiction and, which really, really helped for essentially the development of more artistic and, the development of a cultural economy within, within Ireland at the time. These are, these are little things but important things to be able to make those linkages across the board. But right now, when you've got two departments who have very, very narrow mandates, they don't really have an interest on what's happening at the ground, you're not, you're not going to get any movement on these things. And that's why some of the solutions that I have, or options that I have presented here, I think really, really need to be considered seriously. And it means setting aside the agendas and instead working for the good of, the good of the sector as well. Before, because I know time is running out, I've got some material here, some backup material, if you need some. Sorry.
Glad you mentioned that because we did have that in our school and then Health and Social Services or whoever it was under, they took it away. It was working and now we don't have it anymore and they replaced it with CYCC and then it's like, yeah, we did have art therapy in school before and that was working and I'm glad you mentioned that, yeah.
In regards to that, Mr. Nind, you know, in my writing, I have some of the best carvers in the world. I have the Taylors, the NASA Galloachs, my father, my uncles, all the Bobby Taylor, Big Philip, all the old guys, like, when we were kids, we used to go pick up whale bone in Hendrickson Island, tie one with a 50-foot rope and then just keep adding and by the time you're done, you got 50 feet of whale bone. And then we'd use to go to Bailey Island with a boat, take us three days to get there and look for bowhead, bowhead whales for the bone with my father. And it's near and dear to my heart, this, because I grew up with it and it, when the oil companies left, that's what my dad went to, carving. The biggest thing I worry about my carvers right now is a safe place to carve, the, when they're carving outside at minus 40 because they can't carve inside because under the regulations of the dust, dust safety, but not only that, the housing put into their local LHOs that you can't carve because of the dust in the, in the house. So, but, and I had really good programs, you know, when I, like, '08, '09, in regards to Ulu, we had the center there for carvers where they had a place to carve and do the printing because some of the best prints come out of Ulu. Seamstresses, they had a safe place to sew and we were, and it's only getting better. The artists that we have going on now because of the moratorium and that's what people are living off of now, it's, it's getting better. The quality of work is getting really, really good. And like some of the, like you said, the seamstresses that make our covers and the young guys in Tuck that are making drums, IRC is a big part of that for us too, but in any way, like for myself, I'm trying to get that reopened up in Ulu and safe carving shacks, safe for my carvers, so they have a place to go. And the biggest problem we do have is getting stone. You know, you're getting stone all the way from BC and it's really tough for anybody to get that because when you're buying a little block for 500 bucks, you better, can't waste nothing. And, but I know where you're coming from, I, you know, I feel it because I lived it. And we just, and you're right, we do have to hurry up and do a little bit better than what we're doing. I mean, but as you know, this last three years, it's been a tough three years and, but it's, we're going to work towards it now. So it's really good. I really thank you for your presentation. You really hit a lot of, you hit it home in regards to recognizing the issues that we do have with the Arts Council in Northwest Territories and try to work together with our committee to get to that next level of separation and being funded by yourself. But that's just myself as a, as a member too in this chair, so. But anyways, thank you very much for your presentation. Have a good day.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. For your comments. Any questions you have, I'll leave some of this information with Katie and Kofman. Masih. Thank you. Now the, we'll hear from Sarah Swan, Ms. Swan. Mrs. Swan, Ms. Swan. You're excited?
Who doesn't love a good Venn diagram? Thank you so much for this opportunity to give thoughts and feedback. I'm not sure quite how this meeting got arranged, but I'm grateful. I think about these issues all the time. And so just be aware that every sentence I say, there's an essay underneath it. So hopefully we'll tease some of the nuances out afterwards in the discussion, but it was very hard to exercise restraint in this case. So I'll just jump in. The art strategy is about as thick as a Kleenex. I'd like to begin that way. When you strip away the introduction from the ministers and the appendix, it's a very, very thin five pages of content. Overall, it reads like a permission slip for the government to keep on keeping on not changing much of anything. I'd like to acknowledge though, that the situation is a puzzle. It's a very difficult one to figure out. The arts in this territory are a strange and complicated mix, unique. You have Western notions of fine art stirred together with traditional Indigenous craft practices. We have traditional craftspeople from the communities who are master craftspeople, some of the best in the country, let alone the world, technique-wise. And then we have a handful of professional contemporary artists. There'd be more, but they've all had to leave the territory. And then we have a whole lot of largely non-Indigenous white-collar people who make art or music or who self-publish books in their spare time. So this is a very, very odd mix of competing needs. So I think we need to acknowledge that it's not a super straightforward discussion to have how to support these diverse people. I'd like to acknowledge too, that there are good people working on Art Council reforms that I personally haven't had the privilege of knowing or hearing about because I'm on the outside. But I look forward to hearing more about the changes to come, should the Communications Department ever decide to actually communicate with the public. It's a shame that when the NWT Art Council inducted new members, a brand-new council was formed, the public wasn't told. I had to go digging on the internet for that information. It wasn't on social media, it wasn't on their website, oh wait, they don't even have their own website. This is a gross error in my view. Not to complain too much, I'd like to focus on a few of the, a few of the items in the strategy, strategy that I did like. I laughed at Ben Nind's description of the, the focus on fixing internal issues and attitudes. It shouldn't be on the strategy, it's true, it should be a whole separate document, but I liked to see that mess acknowledged at least. I found that part of the, of the strategy pretty great because from my point of view, ECE and ITI exist as a very dysfunctional marriage. And the sooner they can figure out their relationship and implement the new rules of engagement, the healthier all of us will be in the arts. As somebody who runs or helps to run an arts organization, I feel that dysfunctional relationship often. I like the focus on education. Education's vital, but the strategy did not acknowledge the breadth of the education that is needed. Artists in the schools programs are a staple of arts ecosystems down south, easy to implement here, but it's such a shame that we don't have any, we have zero post-secondary education opportunities for artists here. We're very good at lateral education. We can teach each other how to felt till the cows come home. That doesn't help move growth upward, it only keeps it lateral. I like to focus on increasing access to and availability of craft materials and equipment across the territory. NWT Arts is working on this completely imperfectly and with, you know, certainly there's been controversies, but I do applaud their work in this area. The recent Seal Skin Education Workshop looked really in-depth and really fantastic. Focus on marketing and branding and selling, again, NWT Arts is doing some very good work in this area. But everyone's relying on NWT Arts to do this work and forgetting that it's not the only type of work that is needed. That's just one piece of the pie. Overall, the strategy did not seem to be aware of how arts ecosystems even work in this country and beyond. There is a commercial and business-oriented sphere, sure, where marketing and branding of work is helpful to individuals, but that is only one sphere of many. So if we can go to diagram one, yeah, Canada. So this, this diagram is a gross oversimplification of how arts ecosystems work. But if you can see there, the bottom one has, or the top one there, commercial art, selling art and craft to buyers. But I'd like you to draw your attention to the next one over the sphere that labels academic art world. This sphere is where ideas and dialogue live. In this sphere, artists earn money by being paid professional artist fees, sometimes known as Carfac fees, as opposed to having to hustle to sell their work. It's a completely unique stream of revenue compared to the, the commercial side of things. This sphere is the most exciting one. It's where people think about art, it's where they ask questions like, what's the history of art in the NWT? What are the contexts that have shaped art here? How has it shaped our various northern cultures? What's the relationship of art to healing, to identity, to the themes and values and ethics of art and craft in the NWT? Is there such a thing as a northern aesthetic and if so, can we change it? Should we change it? So I'd like to underline the fact that professional growth in the arts doesn't just mean learning how to brand and sell your work at craft sales or at expos, both of which were referred to in the strategy, and it doesn't mean setting up a table when there's yet another conference in town. It means the chance to exhibit and work with other artists and it means to have your art be part of a dialogue about what is going on culturally and politically and philosophically. And it means the chance to build relationships with curators, with researchers, with publications. It means being invited to the table to contribute to and participate in broader national conversations. And in the diagram number two, if you could move there, the Northwest Territories at present, you can see that that fourth sphere, the academic art world, is almost entirely missing from our current landscape. It's, it's tiny, it's almost nonexistent. It's, it's tiny. It's almost nonexistent. The last diagram, if you could move to number three, is an ideal, of course, and it's a vision for what we could work towards. But this requires resources and government goodwill, which all of us in the arts community are very cynical about now. We just don't believe it's there. The strategy just emphasizes that, this Kleenex. The government has made it clear that they don't feel the arts are worth investing in. So at the very least, we need to compromise. Brief suggestions, stop wasting the little money we have in the budget. Give smaller grants to the spare-time artists and instead help bolster and strengthen the few arts organizations we have across all disciplines that are working to give artists professional growth and development opportunities. And those of us who are working on making sector-wide improvements. So rather than that lateral growth, we want upward growth. This has gotten me to trouble, uh, in the past, uh, a lot of trouble, but I'm gonna say it again. Get more art going on at the only institution we have in this territory that can actually leverage its professional status to help artists, the Prince of Wales Northern Heritage Center. I'm still not sure why this idea was met with such hostility a few years ago, especially given the publication of the new art strategy was about to come out. But nothing bothers me more than wasted potential. Thank you for listening. I look forward to comments and questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Swan. Uh, questions, uh? Ms. Knalkby.
Thank, thank you. And again, like with Mr. Nind's, uh, Congress, or presentation, I feel myself just nodding along often with you. Um, without getting too much into it, when I was the Minister of ITI and I, I did start asking some questions about things with artists and especially supporting artists during the pandemic when, uh, it really was needed. It did become very apparent to me how difficult it really was within the department to get money out the door. And eventually it did result about a year later, almost in that artist's grant. But even that was only, I think, three to five thousand dollars. And then there was a huge amount of hoops that you had to jump through to get it, whereas we were turning to other industries and businesses and just handing them the money and letting them, uh, decide for themselves where that money was better spent. And I think that one thing when I went to the, it was the city council debates that the arts groups held at the Makerspace. And it was just very interesting to me there where, you know, um, having that conversation, again, not being very artistic myself, um, you know, I, I was listening to people and they were like, you know, artists, we are working to do our art. So they'll have their job, their day job, whatever. And, and this idea that, you know, we need to make everybody jump through hoops when artists will already be, they're already sacrificing everything for their art. So to sort of be very nickeling and diming where the money is going, uh, was somewhat, it was the first time I realized how ridiculous that is because artists are not getting rich off of these little pity kind of grants that are coming out. So I, I think right there, that red tape piece is, is just like mind-boggling. So I do appreciate that it must be very frustrating to deal with. Again, I, I, I not have a lot of questions because I think both presenters have really come with some tangible things that we can, we can take back. Um, and I just want to say, I'll probably steal some of your wording around lateral versus upward growth because that's really struck me. I, you know, I do look around and I am excited about, um, at an engineering conference, I think it would be great if there's artisans there to sell arts because the people want to buy it, but that isn't the solution. And, and I think for someone not dialed into it, it's, it's not so obvious that there is that foundational work that needs to be done. So I just want to say, I really appreciate your, your enthusiasm and your, your thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Knalkby.
Yeah, uh, the conference thing, I don't, I don't want to tear that down too much. Uh, it's great. People need the opportunity to make an income and to sell their, to sell their arts and crafts for sure. But it is a little bit tokenizing when people come from different parts of the country, different parts of the world, pick up a piece of beading or pick, or pick up some earrings or pick up a little carving. And they don't, they go home with it and it's just a souvenir and they don't know the whole wealth of beautiful and fascinating cultural knowledge behind it. So sometimes I think these, these craft sales are a little bit tokenizing in that way. I hope that you do take the time to look at these diagrams a bit more and reach out to me if you have questions because when, when Ben Nind was talking about how, how, how can we make an art strategy when there's no base knowledge? This is kind of why I made these diagrams because I don't feel, um, I hope I'm wrong, but I don't feel like many people, uh, with the exception of a few, have any idea of how it could or should even work. So they're just tossing, yeah, nickels and dimes out and they're supporting, uh, all of these, uh, privileged artists who already earn a good salary, who know how to work the system, to get their, their thousands of dollars to make a children's book or to write a song or to make a play that might never be seen, uh, rather than putting that precious little money we have towards larger upward growth efforts.
Um, thank you. And you know what? I do appreciate that as a, as a settler and somebody who is an appreciator of the jewelry and, and all of that and the beading. I really do try to, to not become that, you know, I'm just putting on my adornments and, and trying to, to, you know, really truly understand where it's coming from. And I think it, it speaks to a bigger, we're missing the boat in that if we really just want to talk about economics, which, you know, often drives our territory, this is a huge piece towards our tourism industry as well. And we all would see the, the tourists wandering around the streets of Yellowknife during the day because they're here for the Aurora, but we haven't presented them with anything, uh, to do that is culturally. And I think it, there's a lot of opportunities. So even just for me now, being aware of like, you know, maybe there needs to be a piece of literature that goes along with arts and, and that kind of piece to it. And, and I hate to be this way, but commodi- commodi- commodifying that in a sense because if we don't show the government why to them it's worthwhile, which is financial, like that growth, I think sometimes they miss that, the idea. So maybe that's just a way to, to package it and sell it that there is a commodity there without minimizing what people are doing.
Invest in the arts, ten come back. And so that's hugely important and money is very important to talk about. So I'm, I'm not against commodity at all. Uh, I'm just against ineptness. And neglect.
Any other comments from a member side? Mr. Johnson?
Uh, thank you very much for your presentation. So I, can, you just help me understand residencies a bit, uh, you know, like, like we have maybe one or two artists in residencies ever. Uh, can so, can you just kind of how we would go about getting more artists in residency programs? Who exactly would offer them? What institution? I mean, does one even exist now? And, you know, how we could even expand that into communities? I, you know, I think, I don't know if that word's in the art strategy, but it's certainly something I have my, my head around. Thank you, Mr. Trump.
Mr. Johnson, Ms. Swan?
There's different kinds of, uh, residencies, but the, the bulk of them are when an artist applies or is selected to visit a community that's, that they're not from, in a different part of the country that, that's new to them. They stay for a while, they make art and part of the exchange is that they, that artist or group of artists is expected to, um, both learn from the community they're in and also present and educate that community about where they're from and the art that they make based on their regional, um, knowledge base and their regional aesthetics and their regional histories. So it's a, it's a cultural exchange. Some of them can last a week. Some of them can last a month or more even. So it's arts organizations that typically organize those, like an organization such as the one that I helped to run. But any organization can do it. The museum could do it. Um, NAC could do it. Small communities could do it as well, like, um, the great Northern Arts Festival could easily accommodate something like that. But funding is needed for those things. Usually their, um, their funding arrangement is a partnership with the artists, the visiting artist in question receiving their own travel grants to go, for example. And then the, the receiving community supplying accommodations, artist fees per diem, that sort of thing. Does that help?
Ms. Swan, does that help, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I, you know, I, I, Ben spoke a lot about kind of benchmarks and data and I, it's obviously what the strategy is lacking. And, and it's hard for, I think, myself and committee to kind of get to know what to say. But that seems like another easy one to me, you know, that I, I've, you, you just, how many artists' residencies are there now? Okay, let's pick a number and, and get to it. It's a measurable target, so. That's some thing I'll flag for committee and just hopefully get some changes to the strategy. Uh, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Sorry, Mr. Johnson. Sorry about Ms. Swan. Swan?
Oh, I don't have any other comments to say. Yeah, I'm, it, these, these are key pieces. Artists in the schools, um, residencies, these are key pieces of that fourth sphere that's entirely missing here, which, which has to do with thinking and ideas and not just with making itself. How do we talk about art with words? Uh, we need to inspire and excite each other. And, and when that doesn't happen, flatline, cultural flatlining happens. So I just feel like, um, with that entire sphere missing in the territory, I think that that's something that, that people in power need to think about.
One, I encourage you to come to the Delta in, in the summertime. Cause when they're like for the, for the Innovik, um, Northern Arts Festival, what do we go into the communities? Well, probably thirty, forty percent of the people are carving outside their house now. And, and artisans are sitting on their house and then American tourists come into the community and they're buying up all the art, which is good because it gets to feed their families too. Yeah, so, but I really appreciate your presentation here today and, and your time. And, uh, we have any other questions from the members? Ms. Swan, hearing none. Thank you for your presentation today and, uh, thank you for all for coming. So, yep, so motion, we're gonna, we're gonna take a two-minute break and then we're gonna go into in-camera session. So, uh, motion to go in camera. Ms. Knalkby, thank you. Thank you.